Ohio, currently there's a huge shortage of rental housing in the US, in the state and in the county, and there is a need for alternative housing such as housing in mobile home parks. If you read the first paragraph of your current ordinance, it states that you realize mobile home parks give options for housing that are of a cost benefit. It doesn't state they have to be new. Obviously, that would not be a cost benefit because it just could not happen feasibly. In my opinion, this is an overreach of local government. There's numerous case law examples of similar changes causing harm to business by local government. In regulatory terms, it's called a regulatory taking by US law. It could result in me being compensated for my losses. In addition, I think you guys probably know, local government cannot adopt ordinances which conflicts with state law, specifically mobile home park law, under the Department of Commerce. This proposal is in direct conflict with the Mobile Home Park Operation Code. I do have some case law that I'll give to your attorney to look at. It was provided to me by the Attorney for Ohio Mobile Home Association. Both cases represent very similar situations in Ohio. One of them was the County of Lodi, the other one Kelly's Island. They were trying to do the same thing, restrict the age of mobile homes, and both of those cases were lost by the city, and actually, one of them even went to the Supreme Court, and I have a copy of it here. So, I'll make this quick in closing. I'd really like to work with you guys, but you know, if you do, you know, go forward with this ordinance, I will have no other choice but file a claim for my damages. So, that's all I have to say. And as senior counsel is here, I can give him a copy of this. Thank you.
Wait, does anyone have any questions or anything? Some questions? Okay. Thanks for coming. Jay Elsie. Name, address, you know, I have five minutes.
My name is Jay Elsie from Circleville, Ohio. My address is one three nine zero Eastwood Drive, Circleville, Ohio. And we own Idle Wheels Mobile Home Community that is in your city. And I was asked to come speak because I own a mobile home park here. It's my understanding that there may be some revisions to the current ordinance to state that only new homes can go into our communities. As Dan expressed, we're currently regulated by the Department of Commerce, and I think if that ordinance changes, then that would bring the Department of Commerce in some form or fashion, which I think can be worked out. But I would hope that this governmental body would, like Dan said, take a look at current case law that's out there that has a lot of similarities to this ordinance revision. And it's my hope that council would consider that since the nineteen nineties, manufactured housing companies have been building vinyl sided shingle roof homes through to today. And you can take a well-kept nineteen ninety-five fourteen seventy and put it next to a twenty twenty-three fourteen seventy, and you won't see a lot of difference. So, I think there's some things that could be worked out if in fact that's what the city was trying to get to. And I'd also offer that, I'm pretty easygoing, and if there's some subcommittee that gets put together, that wants, you know, somebody that's been in the business for fifty-nine years, born into it, I'd be more than happy to sit in and give my feedback and whatever I can do to help the process. We currently obviously have a park in your governmental body, and we want to keep the peace. At some point, we'd like to expand our park. And the city put a sewer in force to take care of the meat packaging plant up in the corner, and we designed it so that we could expand it. So, understanding what's going on here, we know it's going to have, depending on how this goes, in effect, if we want to bring a twenty-year-old vinyl sided shingle roof home. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Do you have any questions? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Everyone had an opportunity to read the meeting minutes. All those in favor of accepting, say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Correspondents.
Yes, sir. There are two pieces of correspondence. First, you will see a, an email from Rebecca Wyon regarding Mr. McKenzie, and I'm looking for, my name, I thought you were going to send this.
Here it is.
Yes. And then Harry Stupliff, possible conflict interest, interest.
So, this issue in the first letter was addressed, correct?
Yes.
He was permitted to?
Yes.
Any reports from any committees? Any old business? Does anybody have any new business?
Third reading of Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash ten, a resolution renaming and establishing Fund Two Twenty labeled One Ohio Plan Fund.
Need a sponsor?
Lee Master.
Second.
Vance?
Yes.
Dubey?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Lee Master?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Browning?
Yes.
Third reading of Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash eleven, a resolution by the Council of the City of Wollston, Ohio, authorizing the mayor and/or service director to enter into a contract with CMAB LLC for the sale of water at a discounted rate.
Motion to adopt and pass.
I'll second.
Vance?
Yes.
Dubey?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Lee Master?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Browning?
Yes.
Second reading of Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twelve, a resolution by the Council of the City of Wollston, Ohio, to approve the appointment of Harry Stupliff by the mayor to the Wollston Planning and Zoning Board as an at-large member for the remainder of the term left vacant by Kevin Boyler.
Is this needed to be passed as emergency because of the vacancies on this committee?
We can't pass an emergency. Oh, yeah, we can.
You can, but it doesn't need to be because we've tried to pass it as emergency. We needed it for the last meeting, but we took care of it.
Second reading of Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash fourteen, a resolution authorizing the Wollston City Mayor to execute the legal documentation necessary to purchase real property located at one oh three South Ohio Avenue, Wollston, Ohio, and bearing parcel ID number M two four oh one two hundred one three three zero zero for the purchase amount of ten thousand dollars plus any necessary costs. Second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash seventeen, an ordinance repealing Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash thirty of the, of the City of Wollston, Jackson County, Ohio, pertaining to abandoning certain damaged or unnecessary sanitary sewer lines in Milton Township, Jackson County, Ohio. First reading of Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash eighteen, a resolution authorizing the mayor to apply for, accept, and enter into a water pollution control loan fund agreement on behalf of the City of Wollston for planning, design, and/or construction of wastewater facilities, and designating a dedicated repayment source for the loan, and declaring an emergency.
Need a sponsor?
I'll sponsor.
So, this one, we do need to pass it as an emergency if you don't mind. This is, we've already actually agreed to this in the past, as far as moving forward with the water and getting a loan. This is actually getting the loan now. But if we don't pass it now, it's going to hold us up for like two months.
This is for the water treatment plant?
Yes.
But this is wastewater.
Water, Water Pollution Control Fund. That's where the money's coming from.
But it says construction of a wastewater facility.
That is not, should it be word? I'll have to fix the wording there. That's not good at the beginning. I'll have to fix the wording on the next one.
First reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash nineteen, an ordinance providing for the vacation of the roadway beginning from South Ohio Avenue at East Twelfth Street to its termination, which is a lot owned by Brother Allen Corporation, being described as tax parcel M two four oh two nine hundred one two six zero zero, and declaring an emergency.
Need a sponsor?
Vanna.
So, the next ordinance is going to go hand in hand together. This is, used to be called Manic Express. It has a different name now, or S A Speedway. Right there, where Highway Avenue dead ends into it, a little, for whatever reason, when they laid that out, they actually looked at a road that just dropped into that lot. I don't know why. It's a small triangle. It's never developed. There's nothing on it. It's just a piece of dirt, but it's in the city's name. So, we're just looking at cutting that piece off and giving it, the land, all the land under, the whole land was good. It was one person. Nobody split fifty-fifty on each side, but the same person who's all the way around it, so it's better the same person.
Is that the ice plant?
Yes. Yeah, the still that plant lot. Yep. There's a little piece of Highway Avenue that just butts into it for no reason. So, that's all that one is. And if we did pass it as an emergency, we can talk about it on the next one. That whole lot will want in the rezones. We can talk about that now, but we can wait for, maybe more. So, this is just for that one.
Motion to suspend the rules.
You have a sponsor?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Sorry. We need a sponsor.
Lee Master?
Oh, yeah. You did sponsor.
No.
So, we do need a motion.
Carrie?
Vance, second.
Vance?
Yes.
Dubey?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Lee Master?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Browning?
Yes.
Motion to adopt and pass?
Lee Master?
I'll second.
Vance?
Yes.
Dubey?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Lee Master?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Browning?
Yes.
First reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash twenty, an ordinance rezoning from community business district to industrial, certain parcels owned by James Gettles, Pastel and Fane Enterprises, LTD, and Arthur Allen Corp., and located between Twelfth Street and East Thirteenth Street in the City of Wollston, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Sponsor?
Lee Master?
Question. Mr. Gettles' name's on here. I mean, he's deceased, so how are they, how are they handling that?
It is a state.
In the body of it, it's the estate representative signed off on it.
Okay.
When you talk sponsor, so now, I'm sorry, so this is, part of this is Montgomery Trucking. It was zoned in correctly years ago. When they redid the zoning, Montgomery Trucking's always been there. So, realistically, there's nothing we can do. Just not even try to change the business or do anything to them. That business has always been there. It was just zoned in correctly when they redid the map. For whatever reason, they did AEP right next door to them, industrial. They just didn't do that lot. So, part of it's just correcting that. So, we can update our map to make them look correct. It's not like we're going to have to do it. But then also behind it, the ice plant, which was there when they did the zoning, it should have been zoned industrial also, but it wasn't. But part of this Montgomery Trucking is doing an expansion for their parking lot only, back onto, onto the ice plant lot. We've already did our hearing with the public. We had some people, we did, we sent letters to everyone who lives within two hundred feet of it. We had an open meeting. Some people just showed up, eight or, eight or nine people showed up. I can't remember exactly. Really no concerns with it. They will clean up the lot. They're going to fence it in. They'll have off the street when they pull off, so they're not going to be blocking the road. There will be a gated compound, which is the big thing they're going after. That's about the, the only reason for the emergency is because they're trying to get things moving. They don't want to hold up the sale for this, but they didn't want to purchase the land until it was zoned correctly. They're going to actually terrify the, that storage lot that's there, the storage container thing in the first place. That's going to go away, and it'll all become part of the lot.
Okay. Discussion?
I just have one question. So, with this rezoning, is that going to go from Pennsylvania Avenue back rezoned, or is it just going to go from behind Preston's and that alley there?
It'll go, yes, from behind. Yes, it'll go from the alley back.
Okay.
And then S A, S A Taco Bell will still remain what they are, but everything around them will change.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just, because I know I've got three residential properties right there, and I didn't know how that.
They'll stay, they'll stay, it'll, it'll.
There's a certain designation.
That's community, I forget the name of it. Community business, whatever that is.
I think it says it here somewhere.
It'll stay, it'll stay the same. The house will change.
Okay. Motion to suspend the rules.
Lee Master?
Vance?
Vance?
Yes.
Dubey?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Lee Master?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Browning?
Yes.
Before we go, can we go back to twenty twenty-three eighteen, please? And the heading there, that does say, and/or construction. This was sent to us straight from D L Z, and this is actually for the, the New York, New York and Broadway sewer project.
Oh, it's a different one. I thought this was a loan for the.
Yes.
I had, I had just done for the loan.
I was going the same route.
Yep.
So, this is correct then?
Yes. I do need that as an emergency. If we have a sponsor. Sorry about that.
We need a sponsor too?
Browning has sponsored previously.
Yeah.
Okay. So, motion to suspend the rules?
Vance?
Carrie?
Vance?
Yes.
Dubey?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Lee Master?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Browning?
Yes.
Motion to adopt and pass?
Lee Master?
Second.
I'll second.
Vance?
Yes.
Dubey?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Lee Master?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
All right. So, I'll, I'll kind of keep it with the, for the service director stuff. I haven't really been covering much of that lately, so we'll talk through some of that and then more. If you have any questions, we can move. So, the infrastructure group, they've been working, we had that spot down on Fourteenth Street. You probably saw, we had the road closed for a couple of days. We ran eighty foot of a drain over there, about four inch underground. Got that fixed up, and the street crew came back to and patched it up after them. Over by the V S W, if you ever, everybody, the, the Kroger parking lot in the V S W, we had a lot of standing water there. A lot of that was caused because the gutters off the V S W came straight down to the ground, all these buildings out there. There's really nowhere for the water to go. We couldn't put a ditch down through there. That wasn't an option. So, we went through and we actually installed a storm. We installed a sewer pipe all the way down through there, and we actually attached it to all their gutters. So, that water now is going to pull off the alley for us. We're getting ready to pave that alley because of the, the new addition going into the Kroger's building, which I know you've been, you've heard about in the past. So, because of that, we're getting ready to pave that alley to get it ready. So, we got that done. We mentioned the culvert up on West Broadway. We finished that project, three yards of concrete, new culverts. I even cleaned it off, got better flow up there. We finished Locker Lane. Locker Lane's getting ready to get paved. It's on, those three projects are to get paved, I think, the third week in April, assuming weather allows. Third week in April, all the, all those projects are going. So, we finished up all the stuff on Locker Lane. It's ready to get paved now. So, that's done. Over the last two weeks, we had twelve water leaks, relatively low for us. Just casual, just small things. We're actually got our, what's it called, the loggers deployed right now. We bought, we purchased a system that goes out. We actually look for leaks now versus waiting for them to pop up to the ground. So, we're actually finding our leaks and being a little proactive, which also helps cut down on us having overtime. If you've noticed, probably haven't seen our crews out at night. We haven't had overtime in weeks. Small thing. We've really cut down on our overtime by chasing these leaks proactively versus waiting on them to pop up. So, we've had, we've had a lot less overtime. That's been going really well for us. Touch of an update on the four tens. As far as the building wise goes to the building, it appears that we're, we stopped, we cut out lunches now. We don't have, we overlapped our lunches in our clerk's office, so we stayed up until the whole day for all ten hours. The building's open now. I will say, it does have a, the customer service is a lot better now. We have a lot, shocking the number of people who come in here at eleven o'clock. So, that's, that's helped out. We're also here early in the morning, and we stay later at night. So, the far as customer service availability goes, we're here a lot more. Also, as far as the work crews go, it seems as far as being out in the town, the amount, the amount of time they actually spend on task is a lot longer. And when they get here at seven in the morning, by the time they actually, I was going to say, seven, seven, by lunch, they got five hours of straight working. Before, they barely got three in. So, the amount of time actually, show one hand, is a lot longer. It's, it's been, it's clear the jobs are getting done a lot faster. So, that, that project's been going really well. Me and Mindy has been.
How do they employ you at that?
Oh, they love the three-day weekends. Everyone's doing the same thing. Everyone loves the three-day weekends. So, it was a win-win. The city, the city's getting more done, and they're getting more time free with the families. So, it's definitely been a win-win. No one's really complaining about the ten-hour days, but they all love three-day weekends. So, that's going to win. We got a lot of grants. This is grant season. The edge grant is out there right now. We got a bit, how, how many's on our spreadsheet right now for the month that we got to get done? It's a lot. It's a lot. So, we're struggling. We're doing the best we can. There's a lot of money out there, and we're trying to get as much of it as we can. So, there's a lot of grant right going on right now. Other than that, what questions do you have for me?
How are the streetlights coming?
So, the streetlights, they have my, too. So, they, they've been holding off on us because they're switching over to LEDs. Part, that's part of the reason. Those are small mistakes that happen, but minus that away, they're switching over to LEDs. So, they're getting new light we get now is going to be an LED light, and they're actually raising the cost, which is crazy because LEDs are supposed to save money, but we're going to pay more to have them. So, it's, we're working, we're working on that right now. They, they said that they're going to bring that. I got Chris from A E P. Me and her are going to meet up, I think, next week or the week after. It's on my calendar. Tuesday, Tuesday, we're meeting up. And she said we're doing twenty lights at a time until we get them all in. It's going to be seven hundred dollars a month to add fifty-five lights. So, we might have to take a look if we, do we really want all fifty-five of those lights. If we do, it is what it is.
How much were we committing now?
So, a year ago, when we originally submitted for these, I want to say it was four hundred dollars. So, it's almost double what we, I'll have to go back and look. I can give you a solid answer on that. I'll meet with her on Tuesday, and I'll find out what that difference was.
So, we were already budgeted for that?
We did budget for the four hundred, but yeah, this is, it's coming in a lot.
Almost, almost double.
Just a double. I'll, I'll give you, I'll give you the exact cost difference. And that way, we can at least plan for it. Or we can maybe offset and not do it next week. But yeah, we're meeting next week to discuss which point we want to start with. One last thing. I'm circling back to an old subject that we had in the past, down at the waste of the Benton County, Jackson County, Benton County, building, recycling facility that we discussed a while back. I know we said at the time we was going to hold off on that. One of the projects that we've been looking into, and this is also a B E P coming up, is discussing solar for the sewer plant that's right there behind it. We was trying to figure out a way to do it, to put the panels actually on the sewer plant's property. We just couldn't come up with a way to do it. There's just no.
It's too little.
Spot. There's just too much stuff all packed in the lower area, and there's pipes under the ground everywhere, so you can't just go plug any poles into the ground. So, we couldn't come up with a way to do it. I'll tell you why I'm targeting that facility for solar. It uses about forty-five hundred dollars a month in electricity. It's one of our biggest bills. So, I was looking at a way to cut the, the cost down, cost to cut down for that. So, with that, on the back of that property there, the waste, the old recycling facility, there's a large piece of forest behind it, but it's tied up in that lease agreement. So, I was going to see, if you guys don't mind, I'll reach out to them to see if maybe we can't negotiate a fair price with the, basically them giving us back that land, cutting that land off the lease, and then we sell them the property for what's left there. I think the thirty thousand, I know it was stated in the people who was here for that meeting, I know we all felt the thirty thousand was a little light. So, I think we can maybe go with a little bit more of a reasonable offer, but they give us back some of the land that's currently tied up in that lease. And then that'll give us room to put a solar field in on the backside of that property.
Would we have to have that resurveyed?
We would.
Second part.
Yeah, we'll definitely tie that up in the cost. They're going to sell it anyway, so they're going to have to resurvey it anyhow. So, they can just, we can ask that to be part of the deal that they survey off theirs. But if you're okay with it, I, I mean, I can't make a contract without you guys, but if you're okay, I'll go talk to them, see what we can agree to, and then I'll bring it back to you.
Your solar panel folks, who are they, and how reliable are they?
So, I met with one company out of Athens. It's actually, it was called Sun Solar, I believe. They got bought up by Kinkosi, which you know Kinkosi, like the third largest paving company in the state, bottom up. So, that's the company that I dealt with externally. A E P that I'm meeting, what they're bringing in their own consultants who do solar also, do A E P. So, we'll price it both ways. Sue's gives us the better deal on it. But that's, yeah, that's my.
Serviceability would be a concern I would have with that.
Fair enough.
Service at the best.
We, I will get more answers as I go. I'm by no means a solar expert.
Getting stuck with getting solar panels installed and then not be worth anything.
Gotcha. Yep. I, I'll have to look into that more too, because I'm by, I'm by no means an expert in solar panels. So, but I will get you an answer. So, I will tell you, the target goal's always eighty percent. You don't want to go to a hundred percent because if you make overage, A E P will not buy back that power. So, you're just wasting that money in solar and power. So, they kind of target eighty percent, that magic number. So, you're still paying for that, for that extra twenty. But that's what, and that's talking to one contractor. So, I will, I'll get more answers as I keep going. But yeah, if you guys are okay, I'll, I'll bring us back a plan. What's that?
You said it's a forest right now?
It is.
It has a couple of trees.
It is tough. So, honestly, it does need to get cut down. If you ever go down to our plant, there's, there's monstrous trees like hanging over top of our sewer plant. They need to get cut down anyway. If you ever go down there, you'll see what I'm talking about. So, we need, we need to clear that forest off anyhow. All right. Anything, anything else? I'm sorry.
I hate to visit, I need to go back and visit.
Yeah.
The mobile home park issue. Where are we at with that? Maybe we can get.
So, I will tell you, that's, that's where we're at with it. He is currently working on it. And I will, I'll meet with him maybe next week or the week after. Before the next city council meeting, I'll meet with him. Think you bring it back. I don't know if you wanted to set that to a committee, or do you just want to do it in open city council?
What's everybody's opinion?
I'd just like to keep the public informed of, of what we do.
So, all's ordinance. I'll do whatever you want. You want to do it here or?
I, I think if we could work out some details prior to, then maybe have open discussion at the same time.
Okay. It's going to be your committee.
We'll get the, so you, you're going to put it to committee? You just want to do it open?
Open council.
Open council?
Okay. We can do it at open.
That's fine. I'll, I'll get with him to get everything ginned up, to find out what we can, can't do, what your options are, and then we'll bring it back, and we'll have it, we can have it up.
So, at the next council meeting or?
You think about the next council meeting, or you need one more?
We can, we can talk about it before. If we can, I already have some thoughts on it.
Okay.
Yeah, we can speak next week on it.
We'll just put it on the agenda.
So, I'll get with him for next week, and then I'll get, I'll have it for the next meeting for, for everyone.
Okay.
And then one other question I would have, sorry, is make Wollston beautiful with the parks. Where are we at with all of that? Is it all equipped down there and so forth?
It is a, yeah, yes, it is going. So, they got held up waiting on state plans. That's why the lights didn't get in or anything. So, that's not really make Wollston beautiful. That's O D N R.
Department of Commerce?
O D N R. I could use that acronym. Too many errors. That's O D N R. So, it's not really make Wollston beautiful. They're just, the city's executing that. That's our.
We'll be ready by the time.
No, it will not be. They'll have fields. There's fields they can use, but the whole park will not be ready now. The soccer field won't be ready for spring ball. We'll use the field. Well, Wollston School System's been great letting our, our junior high kids play up on the high school field. We haven't had a problem there. Hopefully, that'll continue. But yeah, we, it won't be ready by springtime.
What about the contract with Make Wollston Beautiful, the lease?
Oh, you know what? I was supposed to meet with him about that, and I did not. I did not have time. I will get with Make Wollston Beautiful. I will get with him on that.
We've pretty much had that contract agreed upon. We just haven't signed off on it yet.
I got to get, because Charlie was handling it. I don't know. It might be signed off on. Maybe, I know, I know everyone kind of agreed to it. Charlie was handling it, and I hate to say that.
Phil?
I'm sorry. Could you?
Has the contract with Wollston, Make, Make Wollston Beautiful been signed yet?
I, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Grant's saying no.
I'll get, I, I wasn't going to be dealing with it. So, I will.
Understand.
I'll get with, I'll get with Make Wollston Beautiful and get you an answer on that.
How about the traffic light? How about the traffic lights?
Traffic lights, the vein of my existence, um, so, the lights are, the cameras all got put in, um, they're working now, they're not actually functioning, but they're up there and they work. The problem we had was right when they got done, I was like, my question to them was how people wanna cross the streets, their answer was, well, you don't have buttons, copy. Um, so we ordered buttons, um, so we're gonna have buttons put in at all the red lights. Um, that's the only thing holding it up right now, we're waiting on the buttons, they're supposed to be in this week, he said, I'll, I'll reach out to them to find out if they actually made it in and when he's coming actually on a schedule. Um, we got held up for a long time waiting on the brackets to come in, so they finally came in, they got it all installed, everything's done, they just gotta come back in and install the buttons. Um, so that was our, our one hiccup there, so.
Did they ever give you an estimate on that crossing?
They never did. I, I can, I'll, I'll ask them about it again, see if they can get me something.
Okay.
We might need, this has been dragging out a while.
But since they're working, you'd think it would be that hard before, well, it's probably not the same.
We're still working on it, so as soon as we get it, um, we're kinda, we're a little bit of a holding pattern, just waiting on it, waiting once the ordinance passes. And then we'll move forward with getting it cleaned out, uh, we can wait the three readings in case anybody wants to come in, which I mean, it's not killing anything, it's just, we'll wait a few more weeks. Maybe on the third reading, if we go ahead and pass it, that way I don't have to wait thirty days to execute, um, that'd be good, no, no, no need to wait thirty days. Um. But yeah, nothing, nothing's moving yet or on yet, we are, we're applying for grants, um, we got our name on the list for three right now that involved that building, or two, two that involved that building.
We have our eyes on one in particular, that's a million and a half, so.
That one hasn't, none of the, we'll still wait, cause they, this is the time you submit, so none of them's been even reviewed yet, so, as soon as we get, um. Soon as we hear anything, we'll let y'all, keep you updated, so we're kinda new to the list, cause as I've been learning, as you watch these grants happen. It seems like the people who's applied two or three times and been told no, finally get it, and being this is our first time applying, I, I'm, I'm hoping we get it, but I just don't know how it'll pan out for us, our first time asking for this money, so. Um, hopefully we do well and we'll find something for it. Oh, and upgrade your service director, um, I think we have found one, but he's, he's a little ways out before he's, before he can start. Um, and I was talking, uh, we was talking, me and our, uh, law director, law service, um. We're probably gonna have Jeff Bates be appointed to the role, just to fill it interim, um, that way he can do all the duties that need to be done to cover us. Um, but he'll just be an interim, just to, to stop cap it until we get.
Sounds good.
Um, until we get someone in.
Okay. That all?
Yes, sir.
Alright, law director, do you have anything for us?
I don't have any.
Okay. Anything from the other?
Yes, sir.
Any clerk's report?
Yes, sir.
Treasurer's report?
Yes, sir.
Fire's not here, tenant's not here, police.
No, sir.
Um, others in favor of adjourning?